Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, October 12th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. We are meeting in the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. For the record, is anybody else recording this meeting besides Lake Cam? Nobody responded, so that said, I'd like to go to our first agenda item. The Lakeville Planning Board will hold public hearings pursuant to the Town of Lakeville zoning bylaw and Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5, on Thursday, October 12th, 2023, at 7:00 PM, at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. The purpose of the public hearings is to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on the proposed amendments to the Lakeville zoning bylaws as follows. So at this time, I'd like to get a motion to open public hearing number one.
Second.
So moved.
So moved?
How was it?
Motion open.
And then a second.
I have a motion.
Second.
In, in order, now I have a second, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Motion, uh, yeah, public hearing number one. This article would amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw, Sections 270.6.6 F, Special Permits. By adding the Special Permits Granting Authority is the Zoning Board of Appeals. It would read as follows. Section 270-6.6 F, Special Permits. And changeable copy signs, electronic message board signs, and internally illuminated signs, or the portion of a sign that is changeable copy, an electronic message board, or internally illuminated... I believe that should say "sign", shall require a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we're adding that text to the zoning bylaw. So, that said, is that a typo?
Um, yeah, seems like it should say "sign" then.
Or the portion of a sign that is changeable, is a changeable copy, an electronic message board, or internally illuminated. No, I think that's-
It just says it earlier in the text.
Yeah, or the portion of the sign that is changeable copy, electric message board, or internally illuminated shall be required, yeah. I think it's correct. Okay.
The only thing we're adding is "by the zoning board of appeals".
So, uh, that said, does anybody from the planning board have any comments or discussion changes regarding this addition to that portion of the zoning bylaw?
Uh, this is just something that we're looking to add to, uh, make it more clear because the Special Permit Granting Authority was not, um, specified previously for this item. It said that it was, it was by special permit, but it didn't give the authority. So this is basically cleaning up the language.
Okay, and just for the record, I'm gonna, I'm gonna read, this will be Article 9 on the town meeting warrant. That will read, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Lakeville zoning bylaws, Section 270-6.6 F, Special Permits, by adding the following text in bold, and to renumber the remainder of the section accordingly, and further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw be permitted in order that it be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Lakeville." In which then that change shows on the, uh, warrant below with the language "by the zoning board of appeals" would be the only thing added. That said, do we have any public comments on this change to the signed bylaw? Uh, being that there are no public comments and planning board has exhausted their discussion, would anybody like to make a motion for recommending this change at town meeting?
Uh, so moved. Recommend, make a-
So Michelle is making a motion to recommend approval at town meeting?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So at this time, I'd like to, motion to close the first portion of our public hearing for that change to the zoning, uh, the sign permits.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to open the hearing, uh, which is our second public hearing. This article would amend the zoning bylaw, Section 270-7.4, by adding the following new section related to the standards for changeable copy signs, electronic message boards, signs, and internally illuminated signs. The balance of the section will be renumbered accordingly. So I, I'm making the motion to open this hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing number two is open. I'm gonna read, as it would show on the town meeting warrant, it's Article 10. "To see if the town will vote to amend the Lakeville zoning bylaw, Section 270-7.4, by adding the following text and renumbering the remainder of the section accordingly, and further than, further that non-substantive changes to the numbering of this bylaw will be permitted in order that it will be in compliance with the numbering format of the code of Lakeville." Thirty, signs, changeable copy signs, electronic message board signs, and internally illuminated signs. These signs must meet the following standards in order to receive a special permit by the Zoning Board of Appeals. A, the parcel where the sign is proposed shall not abut properties on either side or across the street that are zoned residential or contain a single-family dwelling. B, if the property cannot meet the above standard, A, a special permit may still be issued only if the sign is for a use that identifies municipal or public safety, buildings, medical facilities, or retail stores that sell medical supplies. C, it must be determined that the sign is not detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. So that's the addition to the signed bylaw. Any discussion from the planning board?
Uh, this just gives, uh, some parameters by which the special permit should be granted under. I, I'm hoping that this gives it, uh, more of a thorough understanding that the ZBI can, uh, go by. I know we had wanted to meet with them prior to recommending this, but, um, I think it's better to do something now rather than delay it.
And I think, uh, I'll say your intent with this was to clean up a previously made change to the bylaw to ensure, uh, the quote-unquote rural character of the town be preserved.
Correct, yes, because even though it said that these signs were permitted by special permit, it didn't give the granting authority and it didn't give the parameters. So this now creates those.
Anybody else from the planning board have a comment? Anybody from the public have a comment?
Just a silly question on the signed bylaw. Are there any restrictions on these, or what can be advertised on these boards? Is it supposed to be specifically to that business? Or can they advertise anything they want?
I'll, I'm gonna answer you, but-
It has nothing to do with this.
No, I mean, you're asking a signed bylaw question. We are talking about changeable copy signs. It's not directly related to the content of the change, but I'm gonna answer you, because I'll do that, but I- My, my answer may not be a hundred percent correct, so I'm gonna give you- I would check with zoning enforcement, but I believe it's supposed to have some relation to a business within the property.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else? Alright, that said, uh, I'll entertain a motion to recommend approval at town meeting for Article 10.
So moved.
I'm looking for a second, I have a motion. Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to close public hearing two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And next on our agenda is public hearing three. We are past 7:05, so I can open that. I make a motion to open public hearing number three, which is an article to implement an open space residential development bylaw.
So moved?
So I need the motion.
Oh, second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing number three is open. I see that this does not have an article number on it. Do we know what article number it will be?
Uh, yes. Will we get all surgery?
Yeah.
It will be... Copy, look.
Eight, eight, based on that, that final perm, the signed final warrant?
Yes.
Oh, it's in the ver, the language, but not here.
Okay, obviously the planning board has had much discussion on this. Does anybody wanna make any comments on the bylaw itself? I'm not gonna read the entire bylaw tonight.
Um, I do have some comments. I just, for me, like, I don't, I don't feel comfortable voting for this at town meeting in the current format that it's in. I don't think the purpose and intent, um, accurately describe why Lakeville should want to adopt this. I'm, I still, um, I, I don't think that enough... I don't know, I don't think we've gotten enough feedback on it. I think, I feel like we were rushed in putting it out last year and then I felt, once again, kind of rushed putting it out this year. I don't... I think, I think it's... So my concern is that we know, so for example, if we set aside these conservation parcels and, um, for example, look at the Audubon property that abuts the Cedar Swamp. Even though that's in a conservation restriction, the state has taken that land to expand the MBTA. So not only expanded, but they're also using herbicides in a wetland, which I find that concerning. I find it concerning that the state could decide to, at any time, potentially take over or take parts of this land if, even though it's set aside. So I know Barbara Minkowski had always had spoken about this and said that, even, even zinc before on planning board had said that, there's no land that's gonna be remaining in open space in perpetuity. If you leave it open, there is that potential for development. So that's my concern with this.
Who do we get feedback from?
So I don't know that we've gotten any feedback this go-around. Um, I, I think the town planner has met with the Board of Health separately, and I'm not sure if he'd met with the Conservation-
So, yeah.
Well, we reached out to, uh, Board of Health and Conservation Commission.
So I've been to both Board of Health and Conservation Commission twice. Was, uh, first time to present it, then they had some suggestions, went back with some revisions. And, and for particularly specifically for Michelle's concern, that's exactly why we did not want the open space property to be controlled by the, uh, by the, by homeowners association, because then they'll start typically using the open space for, uh, expanding their yards. I mean, who's gonna police them? I mean, there may be a little bit of a conservation restriction, but then it becomes problematic. So for that reason, uh, we wanted it to be publicly owned with a conservation restriction, so it has two, um, levels of protection. So that's, um, uh, that's what's written into the bylaw.
So I, I'm in favor of it. I think that, uh, if we don't do this, you're gonna just see big parcels be developed as 40Bs when the water and, or the ability for them to put a public water supply well is there. I think if we don't take this opportunity, I think we will regret it. So, John, or Jack, do you have any comments?
No, I agree.
Uh, I'm good.
Uh, I will say that on page, not numbered, on... J, Special Permit Decision, number four. Planning board may impose conditions as part of any approval that furthers the purpose of this section 7.10 and this bylaws. I think that has to come out because it's not 7.10. Or is it? I don't know, I don't, I see 7.9, but I don't see a 7.10. So I'm not sure if that needs to be 7.9, or if it needs to be taken out. And also, I mean, multiple places throughout, it says the intent, intent of this bylaw, but in no place does it say purpose and intent. It just says purpose. I just think it needs more work. This, it's, it, it's not reflective of Lakeville. Even number two, you know, in the purpose, "to discourage sprawl development." Well, sprawl development is what gives this town that rural feel. Sprawl development is what's gonna help prevent those large open parcels to be developed down the road. You know, and then depending on who's sitting on this board in years to come, there's certain allowances that say, uh, the board may allow 20% of lots to have the frontage reduced to 50 feet. The board may reduce this figure to a minimum of 40% of the lot to be preserved as open space. So, um, I just... And then, you know, these perk tests. I, I don't believe current perk regulations are actually, uh, doing anything for residents and homeowners. I think the perk tests have, um, become too lenient and they allow for building where they shouldn't have been allowed. And that's why we have so many people that have so many problems with water, especially in town here. And, um, I don't think, I don't think that's a... It's nice to know that they want perk tests done on every lot, but to me, those perk tests are not what they used to be. They're not that same assurance that those should be built, but, built on.
So on two, would you say, "to discour-, no, no, it will not, will not prevent sprawl"? Easy, it says "to discourage", it says "to prevent sprawl development"? Or can you, you might consider-
Well, so this is, this is wording that came from the Foxborough Open Space Residential Design bylaw. So I just don't think it really captures the intent that, with which Lakeville should, um, consider adopting this.
The whole point is, is that this does discourage sprawl development. Whether you like it or not, sprawl development is not what this bylaw is evaluating. It's just saying to it, this, the idea of clustering smaller lots together discourages sprawl development. It still allows development to the same degree as a larger subdivision. Also, the edits from Town Council has removed number, Section 710, so it just says purposes of these, um, the bylaws. They didn't want it that specific. So that's already been edited, um, in the version that was voted by the select board.
Okay, so it still, it still references it here. And I, I, I find it concerning that we never get to see the track changes on these. You know, it used to be we'd get a redline copy, so you could see everything that was changed, so we don't have to go back and forth referring to past-
Is this copy?
Versions.
One that was voted on by the select board?
Uh, no, no, it's, they didn't change, they just changed, um, some editing, but they didn't remove any sections.
What were the changes? What was the edits?
The actual changes were capitalizing, I mean, I could pass it over to you. I have a copy of it right here. Most of the, uh, the items here were just comments. So, they capitalized, they did some editing, some capitalization. Comments, you know, Amy had a bunch of questions, 'cause she, um, so I, I had a phone call with her and answered all of her questions. So, again, it's just some little editing, as you can see. We only got that, I only received that on, um, Saturday, so... Sunday, I don't know, Saturday night.
I think this is just further proof that we really need to work a little bit more on this and it probably isn't ready for town meeting.
So, what was your, like, you know, like, would you all go back and review this one more time and come back with all of our comments and?
Yeah, I mean, if we put it on future agendas and continue working on it and getting it to be something that, you know, more better represents what the town is looking to do, I'd feel better if the Board of Health is willing to, you know, consider more stringent perk, you know, values or whatever they can do within that.
Board of Health follows Title V, so they don't have any, that's what they follow, so... And the fact that they're requiring a deep hole and a perk on each of the conventional lots, whether they're gonna get developed or not, is very unusual, because it requires that you bring machinery out into the open space land that you're wanting to protect. So...
Well, I think that, uh, our discussion's gonna be lengthy on that. So I'd like to... suspend discussion for a little while, maybe 30 minutes, and, uh, pick up with 13 Main Street. Come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Michael LaShaunacy. I'm here tonight on behalf of Paul McMahon, the principal of the applicant. Um, I have a minor change to the plan, um, but I think at this point, I'd like to see the full board here to go over it. So I think it makes sense at this time to, to ask for a continuance to the board's next meeting in two weeks, or three weeks, or whatever it is, to go forward with the full board. And I think there's still some questions on the form of the decision that, that need to be ironed out, um, 'cause I had sent some changes over and I don't think they've got, um, put into the final draft. And it might make sense to use, use that time to, to get it to the final form, so you guys can have something to, to look at and, and vote on.
Okay, um, you don't wanna have any discussion tonight on it? Just continue?
I'd prefer to continue.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, if I may though, just on, uh, the second page. I had, I heard this when you read it last meeting, but, um, I actually went back today and verified. On the top of the second page, where it says the site plan, which was originally filed, showed 19 two-unit buildings for a total of 38 age-restricted units. I verified that that's not correct. It said originally filed showed 19 residential units. There was no total of 38. It was 19. And some of them were duplexes. I even have your letter that I can send to you if you'd like.
I, I, I'm not arguing the point. I, I think, I think the original plan had the, the duplexes in the back and the buildings in the front. I think that's right.
That number's-
It was 19, not 38.
I don't remember the number.
I'll, I'll double it.
Yeah.
So it just needs to have that scratched, the, everywhere, everything from two unit to the restricted units.
Alright, so at the applicant's request, I'd like to make a motion to continue the 13 Main Street public hearing for site plan review until October 26th at 7:00 PM.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Thanks for your time. Alright, next I wanna discuss the planning board matrix.
So, the planning, oh, you mean, so this is the matrix from the master plan?
Yep.
So, um, it's kind of the summary of the goals of the master plan, uh, what actions could be taken, which parties would be involved. So as you can see, the planning board is, and the planner is quite involved in most of the first four pages, so...
So on, I'm gonna say the second page, the last item. Third page, first item. Refer to Housing Production Plan. Is, uh, status. What does that mean? What, we're just, that means nothing's happened?
So... So housing goal, encourage more variety of housing, housing strategy, modify existing zoning bylaws to allow moderate densities, multifamily housing in appropriate locations. The strategy would be create zoning districts that encourage mixed-use village-type developments. Some steps for consulting with some model zoning, and create some bylaws, and that would be done by the board and me. And then the next one.
Right, I guess Mike, I, I could re- Right, I guess my, I, I could read them all, but my question is.
Yeah.
Where it says refer to the housing production plan, and I'm gonna meet with the master plan implementation committee on Tuesday.
Yep.
Am I just telling them, read the master plan? Or, or, you know, is that something that, does that basically mean we haven't got to it yet? Or we're not working on that?
Yeah, well, I, I don't think we're working, are we, I mean, so the O S I D was, is a way of modifying some zoning to allow the different types of housing, it's not necessarily moderate densities, but that's also somewhere else in here. Um, to, to do the O S I D. But. Um. But I don't, I don't see where it says, what does it say about the, uh, oh, refer to housing production plan, encourage more variety of housing.
But the status is refer to housing production plan, whereas the first two items are status, done. Status, done.
Yeah, I'm not sure why, so the, I think the status is comments that Rita had, um, put in for the, uh. So we, we, so this was the last update of this was, um, this was from, I think, January of last year. So at that time, we were beginning to work on the housing production plan. So that's why it says refer to the housing production plan. I believe, that would be my guess, because, you know, once we completed the housing production plan, the idea would be to work on the goals that are stated, uh, around housing.
So would this one be done, refer to, you know, refer to the plan, is it?
So, um. Well, no, it would, still wouldn't be done, but the housing production plan would be done, and then we would have to work on, you know, um, making zoning changes and bylaw changes to, um, allow for some of the types of housing that we, uh, talked about in our housing production plan. Still wouldn't be done.
So on page five, under natural cultural resources, goal five dash one, update Lakeville's priority protection areas. With particular emphasis on habitats, agriculture, and water resources, it says pursue in twenty twenty-three. Priority protection plans are updated every five years, Serpide will contact the town administrator regarding the next update, which will be funded by the state. Have we been contacted about this?
Yes.
Okay, so it says, planning board should be involved.
Um. Ye- uh, yes, the select board, the planning board, um.
So where does that stand right now?
Right, right now, we've had like a preliminary meeting with, um, with them, but we haven't really, um.
A preliminary meeting with who?
Done anything.
With Serpide?
Yeah, with Serpide, just like a Zoom call, saying.
Oh.
Yeah, like an introduction, you know, we'd like to work on updating the plan, um, and.
Can you distribute that to the board, please? Whatever you have.
I don't, there's nothing like to distribute.
Oh, you just said that they, you were working on an updated plan.
No, 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 we received a call saying that they would like to begin to, they're reaching out to all the communities now to begin to work on updating those plans.
Okay.
It's, it's all this, so the.
So there's nothing.
Yeah, the priority protection, priority development area plans are, 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 they're not statutory plans, they're, were created just for the South Coast Rail to kind of help communities plan for growth. And, um, so they've been done a couple times, and this would be the third one. And Serpide does it for all the communities along the South Coast Rail corridor.
Okay, well, I just think this board really needs to be included in whatever discussions going on.
Is Nora part of those discussions, where she's the Serpide representative for our planning board?
Um, well, we haven't had anything other than kind of the initial meeting from them explaining that they would like to, um, start doing that, so, um.
I don't think it should be happening without a planning board member included.
All the master plan board wants to know is, are we doing something and where are we on this thing? I think they've found that, not so much with the planning board, but some of these other committees, that they'd never hear from them. And they have no idea, we've got this wonderful master plan, but is anything really being done? And I think Rodney is, is, is reaching out and saying, okay. And I saw, I said, you know, my, I said, I don't know any of the other committees, my suggestion is, is just have Mark come by and tell us what's going on, tell you guys what's going on, because I think, I can't speak for any of the other committees, but we seem to be the ones that's doing something.
So that's all I'm looking for with this, is just to give me an update, so when I go talk to them.
Yep.
That I know. Because obviously stuff's happening that doesn't happen at these meetings, so I, I should at least know, hey, uh, Mark got a call from, this is happening with Serpide.
Well, and, and, and with the topic of this agenda item, which is the planning board goals, there are some of these that have been included on planning board goals, too, so. And if you wanna even mention our goal number ten, which is communicate this goal regularly with master plan implementation committee, and it's supposed to be time-bound to December yearly. So I guess this will get that done. I mean, so, so even for this, you know, I know this is one that's big in town, um. It's on page three, housing strategy three point, three dash, one dash, two. And it's talking about senior housing and first-time buyers, work in partnership with local developers to build senior housing with a variety of housing units. That's something, I would love to see this board work on maybe an overlay for senior housing in a certain area.
Which part of the matrix you want?
So it's page three, at the top, the first one.
The one you were talking about, refer to the housing plan production.
Other than goals.
I know everybody's always talking senior housing, senior housing, and that, that's definitely something I would love to work on. Getting a overlay zoning.
So is that something we can tell master plan that we may work on?
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Oh, and this, this goal right below it, that's done.
Yes, it says, nothing, nothing on it.
Well, no, so the housing goal three point two, and continue to increase the number of units eligible for the subsidized housing inventory by implementing the twenty seventeen housing production plan. Well, we just completed the twenty twenty-three housing production plan? So we know how many units that we need. Now has that, it's, it's gone through all the proper channels at this point, the housing production plan? We approved it, select board.
So we approved it, select board approved it, it got sent to the state, it's come back.
Yeah.
Like some comments about trying to identify a few other sites for, you know, uh, town-owned sites for housing. So Serpide has made some edits, and, um, they sent it, yeah, I haven't looked at it yet, they sent it, I think, today or yesterday, so.
Yeah, please distribute that.
Yep. So we'll probably put that on the agenda for the next meeting to review, because it needs, again, a second vote from both boards to get the final final submitted to the state.
So if we look at the actual printout of planning board goals, goal number one, review housing production plan, technically that's complete but in limbo.
Yeah, it's awaiting the final, final review and approval.
How about number four, establish tracking and map the buildable land area, use Serpide, coordinate with Serpide.
That's something that I've been, you know, trying to push that really needs to get done, because that's, uh, the other portion to reach a safe harbor for forty B is to have the five percent buildable land area. So. That definitely should be. I, I mean, I did a bunch of it, I put it all in a spreadsheet, we just need it mapped.
Revote, review current zoning map to ensure compatibility with existing users, I know we've talked about this a little bit, how off it is.
So the zoning map has been updated, um, it's awaiting Nate's final review, cause he's most familiar with all the various, um, zoning changes that have occurred over the past twenty years. Uh, to ensure that, um, their edits are correct, so, um.
Now, who did the map?
Serpide.
So did they actually look to see? How, like, did they compare residential homes in the business district, or is it just?
No, it's just an update of the zoning map, it's not a planning document in any way.
This is talking about updating our map to ensure compatibility with the existing uses.
What they're doing is get us an accurate zoning map.
Oh, to start with.
Because it was inaccurate based on the lines that were on the map, and so they're trying to get us something that is just our actual zoning.
Right.
So then we could look at that and say, now we can go through and say, this parcel is a park.
Right.
But it's zone commercial business.
Yeah, something crazy.
And so then we need to go through and change those to say, let's just make that reflective of.
What it is.
What it actually is.
So this is the first step, is to get, okay.
Yeah, right?
Yes.
Reasonable to say that, so.
You need kind of the, your baseline to be correct before you do any additional work.
So what is the next step?
I think at that point, we can sit down and go through parcels and.
Cause it's kind of big, should we divide it and like take section at a time, or what is the, what is the best way? I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, I.
I think there is some obvious low hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Like that wedge of town where a little pond is and a lot of town-owned property there, and.
Right.
A lot of conservation land that's owned business, and I think that's something we just need to look at and say, does that make sense? Do we actually wanna just fill in that residential? Because it's not business, business wouldn't be welcomed there and/or.
Or should we look into a, an adding a zone that's agricultural?
We certainly could. But, you know, I don't think we wanna do agricultural zone over a bunch of houses either.
No, but like if, if there's conservation land that we, we don't wanna see it develop, we wanna see it maintained.
So that's it, I think we need the final map, and then we can sit and go through it, and I think the, the easiest thing for progress would be to go through and take that low hanging fruit of the bigger areas that are obviously miszoned, either from the past or just by use, and it just never got developed that way. And clean it up, I think then we clean it up to say, it, now we can go to town meeting, say this would mirror our actual uses and what growth would like to see in those areas.
Okay, so we'll see this pop onto our agenda as soon as Nate comes back with that map.
I was gonna say, you don't need to do this before you go to your meeting with the master plan.
No, but that's something I can at least say, we're at point A, and we're gonna work towards point D to get there, and we've got those steps coming. And that's what we're working on, even if it's not a definitive part of the master plan, it's something that I think that we need to do, and it'd be good if they knew what was going on.
Sure.
Well, I think that I have enough for at least my discussion with master plan. Anybody else have anything they wanna say about? The matrix?
Well, I'd like to see us maybe start checking things off and then adding new ones. Because I'd like to add.
You're talking about planning goals, not the matrix.
No, no, the planning board goals, yeah.
And that's fine, and I, I think we would definitely put that on the next meeting, because Nora's been, wanted to be involved in that, and I know she wasn't gonna be here tonight, so I didn't wanna delve too far into it, but I think there are a few things in there that we could already pretty much check off or.
Yeah.
Put into a purgatory of we're just waiting on the state type of situation. And then, uh.
Add some new ones, like a senior overlay.
Yeah, something like that.
Peg zoning.
Uh, so we have a set of minutes for September fourteenth, did everybody get a chance to review those?
Did, the only thi- Kathy. You weren't mentioned on it, that's the only thing.
For others present?
Oh, actually, nope, sorry, sorry, one more thing. Just when it was talk on page four, and, and the third paragraph. Miss Carrie Paglieloso, um. She noted there should be elevators, and she also stated that Main Street is already a mess. So I just, cause I know she said she lives there, and I just wanted to recognize that as well. And I'm sorry, I said that wrong. Paglieloso, I was close.
So those two edits?
And, yep, uh. Approve those, the September fourteenth, twenty twenty-three minutes with the noted changes.
That's your motion?
Suggested.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved. Continuing that. Just for the record, our next meeting is October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, here at the Lakeville Police Station Meeting Room. Uh. All right, so where I still have the public hearing open for hearing number three, the open space residential development. Any person in the public want to say anything to that?
So a question on, if anything is deemed open space with that parcel of land, is it then town-owned land?
It, it could be town-owned land, it could be, um, Wabland's trust or another land trust property, it could go to the state as well. Um, or the feds, you know, if we have, we don't really have any federal land here in Lakeville that they would.
But if it wants state-only and they could do whatever they wanted to, or would it stay in perpetuity?
There would still be a conservation easement on it. That was what Nancy Yates' big concern about the first draft last year, was that it didn't have that kind of double protection on the properties. So that, yes, it could go to Concom, but or the select board, or, and then they could pull it out for some other purpose. Like I explained, there was once a property in a town I worked in, where they had some conservation land and they built a school, an elementary school. No one objected, for whatever reason, but it didn't have that extra layer of protection on it, so. It would need an act of legislature to remove it when it's, once it has the conservation easement restriction.
But if it's town, deemed town-owned land, then that would be something the town would have to maintain on top of all the other land that they're maintaining, correct?
Yes.
Depending on the use, yeah.
Yeah.
If it was a park.
Right, which they're kind of stretched out as it is now, and then to add more to their plate, so I could just see more people.
Well, we had that discussion at the, we had that discussion at the Concom meeting, and they do have funds in their budget to hire field staff if they want to. Not a lot, but enough to, considering we have a very limited amount of town-owned open spaces. It is, it's only a few parcels that we do own. As we acquire a few more, it still is not gonna be, you know, tons of hours for someone to periodically, you know, inspect, maintain, you know, and check out and do any work too, so.
So, that's a good conservative view, Sue? But I also think, you know, a lot of people have had the view that they want to preserve the rural character of town and/or preserve some open space, and with normal development or forty Bs, you're not gonna get any space. So, your choice is, the town would adopt half the land, and at least we get something out of it, but yeah, you, you'll have to maintain it if you want it to be something. And yeah, there, there will be a bu- budget requirement to do that, whether it's through conservation, or if the select board says, we want to adopt it, we want to make a, a ball field, because we need to replace something, or the town's grown to the point we need more, and it's adjacent to existing ball fields, or whatever, so that, you know, then, then the parks department would maintain that, it would be part of their budgeted through the select board funds, but again, otherwise, with conventional development or a forty B, the town does not get fifty percent of the land with that bylaw, that's the only vehicle that gives the town half the land.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But I will add, it does just give us these little clusters of bigger developments.
Right, it's not all together.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not all spread out like it is now, it would be clustered.
Noel, Noel, Lakeville, I'm just wondering if it's ever been discussed the possibility of having a land trust? And the pros and cons of that for Lakeville? And is there a financial component that makes it formidable? Just wondering if you've ever discussed.
So, I have a colleague in Falmouth that, uh, he was on their open space, and they did start a land trust. And I, I think that that's probably where it needs to start, is open space.
Okay.
Would need to, to do the legwork to start a land trust, but I think it also needs to be a non-town entity, it needs to be like a nonprofit.
Okay.
The open space, I just came from the open space committee, and the open space committee has talked about land trust, but it, again, like Mark says, it's, it's really independent of the community, and you need a well-healed series of benefactors to get it started. You know, we, we are within, like I mentioned, the Wildlands Trust a few times, they're only out of, I believe they're out of Plymouth. They do own several parcels in town, and I've met with them, they've attended, and you can look it up, they did a really good presentation with the open space committee, uh, which was on Lake Camp. So, you can watch that, and they did discuss a little bit about, you know, other, the pros and cons.
So, you need benefactor.
Most of the smaller land trusts have been.
If we want to start our own land trust, we would.
But most of the smaller land trusts have been consolidated because of the cost of running one and personnel and insurance, I mean, you need, if you have an organization, the legal cost.
Administrative costs.
Administrative costs for just small land trust is really difficult. But they're excited about the fact that, you know, we've passed CPC, that we have some money, we have an active open space committee that's really interested in doing things now. So, that's.
So, it's a possibility?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I would imagine, uh, a land trust would be eligible for grant money as well.
Yes, they are, so we could work with them on a project.
Can I just carry Paglioloso down the street, Lakeville?
Can you say that three times fast?
Paglioloso, Paglioloso, Paglioloso.
Thank you, you can ask that before.
So, I don't know much about all this stuff, right? What, so the, the whole town basically comes down to what you guys decide, right? Is that how it works with the planning board? Or, or how, like, what is our goals for Lakeville? Like, do you support a lot more growth, do you, do you, do you? How much more growth do you, Michelle? Like, who, who supports all this, like, more growth of our town? I'm just curious, like, when, you joked before, when there's no land, then we'll be done building. But, like, how is that gonna affect all of us that are already here with that? You know, if we have to do new schools, the Quonoc was like such a mess, right? We need another fire station. The police and the ambulances are flying down Main Street. I can't even tell you the amount of work they have, it's constant. And, so like, how, maybe I can't be, shouldn't be speaking about it now, like, do we set up one-on-one to talk about our concerns, like, about the town? Or can you speak kind of like this, or, or?
Well, everything we, we do should be done in a public forum.
Oh, oh, like this, or I can speak like this, or is this not the time, or I can't?
Well, it's not an agenda item for this open space bylaw that we're talking about necessarily. You may be able to link it vaguely, but I don't have any problem with talking to you about some of this stuff.
Like, I just didn't know what our overall goal for our town is. Like, I know we've grown, like, how much more forty B until we hit that magic number? Is the forty B the affordable housing type, like, all apartments down there?
Yeah.
So, how much more do we have to go before we reach?
It's all, it's all percentages, it's moving goalposts.
We're almost there? We're at six, we're around six percent, and ten percent is the safe harbor number, and that's why we were talking about mapping the buildable land area, because that's another safe harbor that we should get done. But, so what you're talking about, so we have a housing production plan, we have a master plan. So, the master plan is in place, the housing production plan is being renewed currently, and that's one of the things we, we did briefly mention. But those kind of create the goals, unfortunately, a lot of the framework comes from the state, and they dictate, you know, you should have this or you should have that. And, um, and so it's not representative of maintaining rural character. They want to provide housing. And so, even site plan review, you know, typically, before we did the, the last bylaw modification at town meeting, there was no denial mechanism for site plan review.
Michelle, I did cut you off for one second. I want to wrap up what we're gonna do with the open space thing, and then we'll talk to you about other things.
Um, the, so, just real quick, the open space, is that to keep open, or do we plan on building, like, a bunch more homes and everything on there?
No, the intent, like, we had discussed is, uh, and I'll give you a hypothetical, a summary, a general summary of what this is. If a developer comes in with fifty acres, and on that fifty acres with our existing zoning, he can put in twenty house lots. We'll let him put twenty smaller house lots. And the town will get twenty-five acres, and he puts his twenty houses on twenty-five acres. So, the town will get twenty-five acres, he keeps twenty-five acres for his development. His advantage is, he doesn't have to put six miles of roads to do it, he only has to put three miles of roads. He doesn't have to put six miles of utilities, he only has to put three miles of utilities.
Are there any, like, um, in the open spaces, can someone come in and just build, like, massive apartment complexes?
You can't build on, you can't build on.
Oh.
The whole purpose of the open space residential design bylaw is to protect half of the land as not developed.
So, half, half of the land could be developed and half not developed?
All of it could be developed if you didn't use the open space bylaw.
But my concern about it is that if you, it may not always remain undeveloped, even though the intent is there, is that. Keep it open? And when does, like, when do people get to voice their thoughts on, like, you said four hundred more units are coming, and then over on Freetown Street, I know, um, I've heard a developer is coming, you know, wants to build a bunch of homes over that way. So, like, how is that gonna affect our schools, our police departments, all of that? And will our taxes be going up and, you know, things like that? Like, what is the goal for our town? Like, do you want it to continue to grow, grow, grow?
I don't see how you, it, it's not my goal, I mean, I remember being in the town when I was young, and it was like three or five thousand people, you know, it's up over eleven. But you can't, you can't tell them, you can't build on that. If they own it, and the, the use that they want to develop it in is zoned for that, that's called a buy right use, and you can't stop them.
Right.
So, you can't stop some of that development to, I don't know if it's gonna answer your question, but I think some people's intent is, if we're gonna get a lot of residential growth, we have to offset it with some business growth, because businesses don't put children in schools, businesses don't need the same services that residential homes do. Whereas, depending on the residential growth, and, and I think that's an advantage of the open space bylaw is, it allows a developer to put in conventional homes, not affordable homes. So, every one of those conventional homes, just hypothetically, and I'll use this three developments that I've used as a reference in the past. Highland Park, do you know what that is? You do?
I do.
Heritage Hill, Old Powder House, with a.
Oh.
Lakeville, uh, I'm sorry. Heritage Hill Country Club was.
Yes, yes, okay.
Parkhurst.
Yep.
Rush Pond Road.
Yep.
All those were developed, permitted before nineteen seventy-six, I think the date is, so they all have three-quarter acre lots. That's what we're looking at in this. Three-quarter acre lots, but full-size homes. Properly, you know, designed so that you're not gonna put a six, you can't put a six-bedroom house on a thirty thousand square foot lot. You can put a three or four-bedroom house on a lot, so it'll be allowed in this. But those houses, if you compare them to those neighborhoods I mentioned, are all homes that are, if you put a four-bedroom house like those in this state, and then proposed development, they're gonna be worth seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. So, the taxes that are brought in off those, at least covers a child. Whereas, if we allow a lot of forty Bs, and we don't do anything to correct that, they're worth, they're valued at like a hundred and eighty thousand. So, you get about twenty percent of the tax dollars, and they, and those developments I just referenced typically put more children in the school systems than the higher-end development. So, I think one of the advantages of an open space bylaw, however it gets crafted, is far better for the community, because you'll get some open space and you'll get some high-end homes that won't break the town.
Gotcha, okay.
And, and, yeah, I know, that doesn't answer your question about the fire station or commercial development or build, 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 but it's just, to me, that's the advantage of this is, it helps keep the town whole, and it gives, yeah, it gives the developer an opportunity to build without the state in his back pocket through the forty B process, and he doesn't have to put in the road infrastructure that's as big, but we still get, he gets the density, but we get the, the higher value homes in our town without the burden on the schools.
So, the opens, you know, the part that they can build on would be like homes with like larger yards, that type of thing, and not like a bunch of more apartments?
It's gonna be like Rush Pond Road or Heritage Hill. That's the size lots.
Oh, okay.
But then you'll also get an area the size of the golf course that's just walking trails.
Well, that's better.
Or just, just woods, but you just can't build on it. Conservation restriction on that, so that's what this does.
But Berwick Hills isn't considered with those properties?
No, that's a forty B.
Okay, I was just curious, I didn't know all the stuff that goes, you know, how complicated everything is.
Yeah.
You know, with all the bylaws and everything, so, I was just curious how that all works. Thank you.
You're welcome, appreciate your asking.
Mark, so did you say none of them would be affordable?
We don't have an affordable component in this, no.
Is that something that could be added or not?
I'd ask about that.
If you really want to defeat it, yeah.
Well, I'm, I mean, I'm just.
I don't, I don't understand that, because we'll, we'll all sit here and say, we don't want a forty B.
Right.
But then we want to add an affordable component to this.
Well, just so that it would go towards our safe harbor, no?
Who cares about that, we're never gonna reach it.
Okay, we won't reach the met the number of forty Bs?
I hope not.
I don't want that, I don't.
We have to turn it to like a city. We'd be looking like a city.
No, no.
No, we gotta act like we're trying. But reality is, we're never gonna reach ten percent, do you want them?
The satur- ten percent saturation is, that's gonna take a long time.
Hopefully.
Yeah. Saturation takes a long time, but that's.
What do you got, John?
No, just about the open, so, you don't want to send it to town meeting?
No.
At all, or just because you want the edits, right?
I think it needs more work. I don't feel good about this version.
I, I mean, I like the idea of it, but like, I think, you know, I kind of side with her with if there's edits or there's changes that, that have to be done, and should be done before it goes to town meeting to get voted on, but I don't know. So, it's on the agenda, so what happens, so if it goes and gets voted in, then this becomes it, then we'd have to change it if we had to make edits, right? Because we don't have time now, right?
We would have to make a motion on town meeting floor to make changes to what's here, if we tried to send this to town meeting now.
My only question is, you know, from a functional perspective, what changes would you want to make? Because, I mean, aside from maybe you can enhance the purpose section or a couple other things, but I mean, but from a functional perspective.
More joint meetings, I think we flushed a lot out. I don't like this go-between, Mark goes here, Mark goes there, makes changes, comes back and claims this is what was said, because I would rather have that discussion with these people and these boards, instead of just, you know, having to, to go on his word that this is what was said. I would like, I think, I think, from working on CPA, the more people involved, the better it is, and I would, I think, um, maybe having more time for public input, or getting open space involved. I don't think they've even commented on this yet, and this is an open space residential development. So, I think it just needs more work.
What do you think, Jack?
Yeah, I mean, as Michelle was saying, getting other higher parties involved. I mean, to me, I mean, what little I know about this stuff right now, it seems fine to me if we go to the town meeting and then, you know, ask the. and then, you know, ask that, we go back and re- review, change it. I think you'll get pushback from the taxpayer. They say, why did you bring it up, you know?
Oh, I agree. I I I said that out of the gate, is I don't wanna go to town meeting with a bunch of amendments on it. I wanted to work it out prior and we have discussed it a long time. I know early on, Michelle, you had put a lot of effort into it and if this isn't reflective of that, I I can understand your frustration to that, but it's unfortunate. I do think that if we don't pass it, I'm not saying vote on it tonight uh for recommendable on town meeting floor as much as if Lakeville doesn't pass an open space residential bylaw, I think we're, we're hurting ourselves with allowing forty Bs, cause it's a better vehicle for developers.
Michelle, you know.
Than than a good OSRD. I think a good OSRD will be better for the town and a developer than a forty B. And I think that'll be an advantage to the town, but if we gotta get it right, I get it. So but anyway, for tonight, because we don't have a full board, I'd like to continue this public hearing until our next meeting. And it gives us, it, everybody take some time, think about it. If you can come up with some small changes that would satisfy it, that's great. And I don't disagree that if you wanted to, if we're gonna have joint meetings, I think it's a go to them though. I don't think a lot of people are gonna come to us. I mean, I love having you guys here, you're four, but all the these, you know, all the public hearings tonight are advertised for weeks in advance and this is the turnout we get. So I, I think that's the challenge, Michelle, is people aren't gonna come to us, you have to go to them.
Michelle, how we, what do you, I just, you know more about this than I do.
I just.
How do we go about making the changes or meeting with whomever you think is appropriate to make the changes?
Well, like I said, I'd like to meet with, so if border health had concerns, I would like to meet with them and make sure that this addressed all those concerns. Same with conservation, I know you said on conservation, so you could probably speak to that. I don't, like I said, I don't think open spaces even reviewed this. I think open space should review it. I, like I said, if if Audubon conservation land can be taken and used by the state for MVTA expansion and herbicides dumped into wetlands, I just wanna know what sort of reassurance can we get that open space preserved here will actually remain? Like, that's what I want, like I would like to have some.
When you say Audubon land taken by the state, what are you referencing?
Where the uh MVTA expansion has happened. So it's gone right through the cedar swampland.
But it always was there.
Right, but it's expanded and like I said, they're dumping herbicides to prevent weed growth in the wetlands. Or like alongside the wetlands or however close it is.
Fixed up the existing rail, widened the track bed. That's what you're referring to.
Right. But I mean, they went from what, one lane to two, double lanes now? And plus all the extra that they've taken and the fencing and the herbicide. And so I just, because of that, that's what makes me like I was on board with this. I thought we should go forward with this. That that makes me hesitant. And just for the fact that the state keeps pushing housing down our throats, I I I don't I'm not reassured that the state somehow would not eventually say, you have extra land, you have to build on it. Just like we saw with the commuter rail housing, saying now you have to create this extra zoning. I don't, I don't feel reassured um living in the state we live in, that 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 it's gonna be in perpetuity.
But would there be anything that we could add to this that would, that would stop them through that anyways?
I don't know. That, I don't know.
This, this is as as strong as, as strong as you could possibly have. Public ownership of the land with a conservation restriction to another entity is about as strong a protection as you can have.
I I do think your concern of that a parcel being pulled out for other uses is the chances of that happening are are very minimal. And it it, you know, I think.
I think down the road, I think this is short sighted. I think down the road, it's hard to predict what.
No, e- e- everything's gonna be hard to predict down the road. It's one of those things that if you took a fifty acre parcel and you got twenty-five acres in open space, just somewhere in the middle of town, it's not gonna be just changed into
And and another.
Property.
So another part of this that concerns me is that if developers are reaching out and pushing for this, i- it makes me weary that there's something, something else. It's almost like they know s- no other option would be viable, so they want this. And I don't, I don't wanna help speed that along.
Eric, don't these developers have to come before us and can we deny that?
Well, it depends on what it is and it depends on when it comes.
You can. Well, all that said, I'd like to continue this public hearing until our next meeting. Did everybody agree to that?
Yes.
Alright, I'm gonna make a motion to continue this public hearing until October twenty-sixth at seven PM.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll continue that. I have a full board and please bring back any suggestions or input if you wanted to, how we proceed. Mark, do you want this copy back?
Um sure, or do you wanna keep that?
I wouldn't mind if you.
Yeah, I can, I can um email it around to the board.
Thank you, please.
Can, can I ask one more question on not on the specific OSRD, but on the so right now it's still, it's still on the town agenda, right, for the public, for the town meeting?
Yeah, the select board voted the warrant on uh Tuesday. So that warrant that Mark has is what they voted to submit for town meeting.
So we'd have to, any edits would have to be brought up then?
Any edits would have to be brought up on the floor of town meeting uh as an amendment.
So what's here is gonna go to town meeting? If if it's approved or not, it, that's what's going to town meeting.
But not that, the one that is edited.
Yes, um.
That we haven't seen.
Saying is, yeah, give or take, basically this is going to town meeting. And if we wanted to make substant- substantial changes to the purpose or anything like that, that would be a motion on town meeting. Which is November thirteenth, fourteenth, thirteenth? Okay. Help me here. Did I read motions to close, public hearings one and two, correct?
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so only three is open but then continued. So procedurally, we're good with all, all that. Any correspondence, Mark?
Um we received a few notices, uh most of them are from Rochester, still pretty busy. They have a self-storage facility at Kings Highway and Route twenty-eight that may be substantial, I don't know where that is. They also have a recreational marijuana facility.
Another one.
Another one, that's right.
Where's that, Rochester?
In Rochester, yes.
So like Dunkin' Donuts?
So, yes, soon there'll be one on every corner. It's true. Yeah, that would be six twenty-one County Road in Rochester, if anyone knows Rochester. And they also have a large-scale photo um photo, yeah, and solar panel installation. And that's the significant ones um that we uh we've received, so.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We got an extra vote.